We live, Robin?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Roseville Board of Commissions. This is a virtual workshop session, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you, everybody that's participating tonight, taking time to, uh, to, to come to the meeting and also I want to thank anybody that's watching, uh, virtual. We, this is a workshop, we got about six or seven items that we will cover tonight. And, um, and I hope, uh, I hope you can watch and, uh, and, uh, and see what we, uh, we talked about tonight. Uh, I would say that we are still under the, the ten o'clock curfew. So I would like for us to be, uh, be, uh, I, I know, I know a lot of folks at home, which is no, no big deal, we go to one o'clock if y'all want to, but, I've been, I know that the, the staff and myself is, is, uh, is in, is in the town hall here, so I would love to get us out of here by ten, so we can get home before the curfew, Kelly. Looking at the agenda, I think that's possible, is that, you agree with that? Okay. Uh, Robin, I see all the commissioners are live here, do you want to call roll? Real quick?
Yes, if you would just temporarily unmute yourselves so that you can respond, starting with Mayor Protem Medley.
Here.
Commissioner Sneed.
Present.
Commissioner Sutton.
Here.
Commissioner Vilga.
Present.
And Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Thank you, all are present, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Robin, appreciate that. And Kelly, at this point, I will turn it over to you, uh, to work through the agenda items.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Town Board, um, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Good. Uh, so the first item on the agenda is, uh, a discussion about the, uh, existing Wake Forest-Roseville annexation agreement. And, um, what we want to do-
Am I the only one on a frozen screen?
Excuse me? Sorry. Um, the, and the existing, what we want to do with that agreement. Uh, let me give you some background. And? Oops, let me do this, hang on, I'm practicing. Sorry. Let me try it again. Okay. You all see that? It's called map one.
We can.
Okay.
Yes.
So this is the map of the existing agreement. Late last year, due to the notification we received of their, uh, Wake Forest and, uh, the Daily School, uh, I pulled out the agreement and started reading it, um, and realized that, uh, it is set to expire, I think it's March fifth of this year. So that got me, uh, started saying we probably need to do something with this agreement to try and meet that deadline. So, um, we engaged and started looking at the, uh, map a little bit more, looked at the agreement, and then also, uh, called Wake Forest and said, we probably should start meeting on this. And, uh, we did, so we had our first meeting, I think, uh, it was in, um, mid-November. It was a meeting of the two town managers, the two mayors, and the two planning directors. And we talked about, uh, the agreement and what has happened, um, in the agreement over the course of the last twenty years, it's about ready to expire. And of particular interest was, uh, to us, was a couple of recent modifications that were made in Wake Forest over that twenty-year period, and I'm going to attempt to try and, um, highlight those. And that is that, um, there were two areas that over the course of twenty years, uh, there was annexations by Wake Forest in what was Roseville's territory, uh, of the agreement. And the first one is this section here of this subdivision that you can see is now annexed in Wake Forest, even though the line had in Roseville. This happened several years ago. I have heard about it, um, from folks here, but really have not done much research on it. And it doesn't appear that Wake, uh, Roseville really did much contested-wise on it, other than knew about it. And so we can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Um, the second one, that area that is more recent, as recent as September and October this year, is this area up here in the north, which is part of this Averit subdivision that Wake Forest annexed and brought in. And includes this entire stretch here, including this area here, the watershed, and this area here outside the watershed. So, uh, Danny and Ronnie, if I say anything out of line on that, uh, discussion on that day, we talked about these a little bit. And talked about, uh, we were trying to ask why they did this annexation, whether they knew that they did it, uh, and spent some time on that, but there was really, they were very noncommittal towards this about it. Uh, also during that meeting, we talked about two other areas of interest that the mayor brought up that we might want to explore, excuse me, as I now start messing it up, sorry about that. Uh, and that would be areas that we have historically had inter- contact by landowners about possibly being in Roseville. And one of those areas was this stretch of six or seven parcels right here on Jones Dairy Road. And then also, this subdivision has reached out, uh, over a period of time to Roseville to see if they could be annexed into Roseville, some citizens of the entire subdivision. But there has been interest because they're out in the county and paying a higher water rate.
What subdivision is that, Kelly? I'm sorry.
What's that?
What subdivision is that? I apologize.
Danny or Ronnie, can you all help me?
Okay, that's, that's okay.
Yeah.
Jones Dairy Farm is the name of the subdivision.
In, in, in unincorporated Wake County. So we left that meeting, uh, with some assignments to, uh, have the staff talk about these, um, options, talk about where we should go uh, in the future with this agreement. And try and get back together before the expiration date with, uh, some discussions with our boards on, uh, where we might want to proceed with this. And if you remember, I think in the end of November, uh, the mayor and myself brought it up in our reports, and we'd had this meeting and talked briefly about it. And, uh, it was becoming back to you soon. So, um, we did have, uh, uh, can I turn the page on the air? Uh, there was some work done by both staffs on some options. Um, and we had, well, a couple of conversations. And there was a couple of points that became pretty apparent, at least to me, that the, uh, staff of Wake Forest was not necessarily seen the same with us. And the particular one was this area up here, the most recent annexation. Um, there's, by our agreement, we were to be notified of this annexation and provided the opportunity for input. We never received that notification formally. Um, and they admitted as such. Uh, secondarily, though, their position is that this larger section outside the watershed uh, was, is covered by the Wake County Urban Service Agreement, USA. And it calls for, Wake County's USA calls for this area to be served, their utility served by Wake Forest, even though it is, that, that USA doesn't acknowledge annexation agreements, nor should it, it just is a Wake County planning document. But it was Wake Forest's position, since it was called out, that it was legally okay to have this be annexed into Wake Forest. They did acknowledge, though, that this section here, these fourteen acres, should not have been because it was not covered in the Wake County, USA. And therefore, it should have been not annexed. And so they did admit that. Um, we, we talked at length about this. Um, I was, my strategy was to attempt to, uh, have them come off that position or work through that and, um, I thought I was getting somewhere, but I never did, at the end of the day. Also, we talked about the other options that were discussed in our meeting, these other two options, and as you know, I've referred to these as option three and four at length. And they kept on wondering why Roseville would be interested in these. Uh, really wasn't proper planning. Uh, their water utility lines were extended through here. And, um, you could tell after some further discussions, they were not very amenable at the staff level for this. So now we fast forward up to this last week in which, uh, they were having a planning retreat on Friday, Wake Forest did. And this is one of their agenda items, very similar to our planning retreat we're having in two weeks. They had this on their agenda. And they wanted, uh, to go through it, and they had a recommendation for a different map approval, so let me stop showing this. Oh, shoot. Always get out of here, my husband, can you see anything on that?
Option one B.
Okay, good. So their, their recommendation was, uh, to modify and I would call it a tweak, the, um, agreement map. And that would be to add uh, change the line, if you remember, the old line kind of went right here and went up. They squared it off at Jack Jones Road, let me, can you all see that okay? I hope so.
Yeah.
Uh, and added a couple of parcels here. And then they brought it up here and went ahead and acknowledged their annexation and then brought it back through. So their position was for the fourteen acres of watershed that they did not properly annex in agreement. They were changing the line to add about ten to twelve acres in here of non-watershed land into the Roseville. Uh, they did not address, nor want to address, anything else, just simply that. Uh, I, I brought to their attention that I did not have your, uh, positions entirely, that was what was, tonight was about. But I knew there would be some interest to talk about the properties or the lands on Jones Dairy. And so they decided, it's part of their discussion on, uh, Friday, to go ahead and, uh, if you, if the Roseville's interested, we could add the six parcels on Jones Dairy to the map. They would be okay with that, with the caveat that Roseville would pay for the cost of generating a new agreement. That is a kind of a new item in the last twenty years. Um, I've learned a lot about agreements and such, meets and bounds. But one of the more common, better practices now, best practices in agreement now is to have meets and bounds description of the line and done by a surveyor uh, so that it's, uh, legally defensible, it's easy to follow. And, uh, they said if Roseville wants the six lots amended and added, that Roseville would have to pay the entire cost for the meets and bounds study and review and put together the organization, put together the agreement. We've had a couple of quotes for about thirty thousand dollars for that meets and bounds study. Um, they said if Roseville does not want to do this, and they are, you're amenable to go in with this map, they would pay the entire cost of the meets and bounds study and putting together an agreement. And I think that was their way of also acknowledging that they messed up here, or not messed up, but they inappropriately annexed this. And they were going to go ahead and do this agreement, uh, with their costs associated.
So, so, a quick question, to make sure I'm clear of what you're saying here. Uh, so what they want us to pay for is the whole red line. Uh, if, if they try, i- if we, if we, if we, uh, do, uh, Chalk Road, they want, they want us to pay for the whole red line.
Yeah, they want us to do option three, which is actually the Jones Dairy parcels. Let me bring that map up real fast, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I said Chalk Jones Dairy. But, but the thirty thousand is for the whole red line, right?
That's correct.
I can understand we do it for what area we're, we're, we're changing, but uh, why are we, why do we correct in their mistake and paying for it too?
Their, their belief stated to me verbally is that they are, uh, if we want those additional six, which they believe, uh, are not something that needs to be done, they should stay in Wake Forest, then we should go ahead and pay for the entire meets and bounds.
And, and we get nothing in return for what they took, pretty much.
We get the six additional-
Some of it, we don't pay, pay that through the whole red line, we don't get anything in return, other than those couple of lots up there.
Right. That's right. Nothing else changes, this map's not entirely accurate, it says, it shows this, and that's not right. It would, they would go with you, what is the one B option with the six slots in it?
No, I see if, if it's, um, fits an agreement between two parties, I mean, we should split the cost, that's the only way I see that, I mean, you, it's an agreement between two towns for a certain amount of time, I'm not sure why that, that cost would fall on us.
Um, well, I hate to do, I, I hate to be the, the voice of Wake Forest, but I'll tell you why they say that. Um, the rationale, I believe, is that if they had not made this mistake, okay? And, and we, all we agreed to is a new agreement today, without any tweaks, let's just say nothing changed over the last twenty years, and we all liked how it was. They would agree agreement with what you said, Paul, that it should have been split. But what they're saying on this one is, since they annexed inappropriately, they're, they're willing for a term to modify this line, to give a little bit more land to Roseville, and to pay for the costs associated with the-
All right, this, this little piece of land right there, that, that they're willing to give us, how much land is that in comparison to how much they took?
Okay. Let me, um, blow this up a little bit.
And, and also, Jackie, most, whatever thing they've given us is in a watershed, which we can't use anyway, right now.
Actually, actually, it's not, Mayor, this all here, this is the section right here. It used to come down here and went up like this, in the original. So it's about twelve acres. It's a hard corner in Jack Jones. There's a greenhouse facility here down below, a little bit, that's now been modified.
All right, Kelly, that line's, that line's gonna go straight across, uh, rev it and dip down right there. Uh, John Jerry, take, take your cursor.
Yep.
All right, and it's gonna go straight across, back it up. Now, we're gonna pick up every bit of that.
Yes.
Versus that.
Yes, it used to come across like this and then went up. There, and you know, and the one I showed you at first, now it includes these three or four chart parcels here. This is a wooded hard corner out of the watershed, ten acres. There's a greenhouse here, operating now. Uh, and I don't believe that, and I think those are the, those are the three that are, they're adding.
All right, so we're, we're giving them, uh, we're picking up ten acres and they're taking fourteen.
In the watershed.
Yeah, okay. All right, some battles just aren't worth fighting. If they're going to give us ten acres and, and they're gonna, uh, uh, and it's not gonna cost us anything, they're gonna do paperwork on it, we may, we may want to think about that.
But we lost a piece-
We're picking up everybody, everything where you got, no, no, put your, put that there, put, put the cursor back, back it up a little bit more. We're picking up that, right?
It's here.
Yeah. But, but Jackie, if you look at it, we lost that whole green piece up there, show them the whole piece that we lost, that piece right there. We lost that whole thing. And then we lost a big chunk over in the other subdivision, pointed at Kelly.
Yes, we basically, we basically lost, uh, two hundred, uh, home sites between those two.
Over, over the twenty year period.
Okay. All right, I would like the, the attorney's, uh, guidance on this. Dave?
My suggestion would be, if we're going to discuss what our legal rights are, we do that in closed session.
Okay.
Okay, well, I have a non-legal question. What happened to the, um, Jones Dairy Farm subdivision? Did that not come up, Kelly?
Uh, oh, one in the previous day?
Well, you initially mentioned that some of the neighbors were, did an annexation into Roseville.
No, it, it, it's still an option, but they don't want, they, they do not like, they do not suggest that.
Yeah, they refused that in their meeting Friday.
As well as the other six lots there?
No. That's the one that they said, if you want to do those six lots, these six lots, they, they'd be amenable for moving that line up here.
With us paying for it, or them paying for it?
Us paying for it.
Kelly, is the thirty thousand dollar quote for a resurvey of the entire line, or only a thirty thousand dollar quote for the adjustments that are being made to the line?
It's my understanding. By understanding, it's the entire thing, dude.
It, it's, it's difficult, it, it's difficult for a lawyer to understand why you would resurvey a currently existing legal line when the legal standard hasn't changed. You would just survey the places where you are adjusting the line.
Um?
They, they claim that the current agreement is not a meets and bounds.
Still can't hear me.
Heard you, Michelle.
Okay, Robin and I were trying to do some technical stuff, okay, all right, thank you.
All right. They, they claim that the old agreement is not a meets and bounds survey.
The statute, uh, the statute has not changed in twenty years, to the best of my knowledge.
I, I, I just, I understand.
I don't think we have enough information to make a decision tonight, I think that, that, uh, I think what, uh, Kelly has ga- given us is very informative. Uh, but I think that, that we need to go into executive session to get it, guidance from our attorney. I just feel like we are ta- that, now I don't want to say that either, but, but we have been, even, and maybe they didn't mean to, but we have been taken advantage of. And I, I also agree with Paul, that if there are expenses incurred, there are expenses incurred because they made the mistakes, we didn't, and they should share in the cost.
Kelly, can you just explain something? I'm sorry, I was asking a ton of questions and couldn't get through. The reasoning again, as to why they want us to pay for the whole thing versus just a portion that affects Roseville?
If we are interested in these lots here and moving the red line up to here, they believe that's in their service area, they do not support that, but they're willing to support you to do that, if you want to pay for it.
The whole thing.
The entire cost of the agreement. And today's point, Dave, I read this, and I've kind of had a couple of conversations with folks. And their, their planning director believes it needs to be a meets and bounds, legal description, meets and bounds survey, should be, how's that? And has convinced them that that's what they need to make sure, and something different than what was done twenty, twenty years ago. And I've had more than one conversation with her on trying to change her mind on that, and they are falling on that.
Yeah, and one old thing to keep in mind, guys, you know, I, I don't think, I, I think they're okay with the expiring. And if they expire, they, they have free wheel over, my, my understanding, everything, even the stuff that's in ITG, ETJ, they can come in and annex us our, our property, so.
It's all up for grabs at that point, even if it's designated Roseville or designated Wake Forest, it's all up for grabs.
So even the dishonesty they did, they really don't want to fix it, and they really don't want to, um, safeguard anything going in the future, they just feel like, I guess they think they have the advantage where they can, uh, you know, they can, can move on in.
I just want to say something that I don't think we should say in an accusatory way, because it could have legitimately been an accident, but I understand where you're coming from. But to what Jackie said, we definitely need more information, and we need to go into closed session moving forward.
And since March third is coming soon, uh, uh, what are our options about extending that agreement until we can make a decision? Do we even have an option to extend the current agreement that we have with them?
So, so Jackie, I think as long as we're working towards an agreement, both, both everybody, at least staff-wise, believes that we are mutually working towards something, and it can be, continue to be extended in a non-technical perspective, until we get it approved.
But after March third, it's more like honor system.
That's right.
That, that bothers me, that scares me.
We're not gonna get, we are not gonna get it done by March third.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't expect us to.
Right, but we may have, uh, you know, a general idea and then what we're doing, and then everybody would have a handshake that we're working on.
But, um, Kelly may want to re- reread their words they said, but they're basically, I kind of interpret, I may be wrong, y'all may interpret different, that we don't agree with what they, they said Friday, that they would prefer to just expire.
That's right, if we, if we don't agree to one B or three, one of those two.
Paying for the money, paying for the thirty.
Paying, if three, if we agree to three, if we say we want three in pain, or we want one B and they pay, those are your two options they give you.
Right.
Or the third is we let it go expire.
We take one of those two, or they, they willing to let it expire, yeah.
That's right.
Can we do closed session tonight? To try to get this resolved? Is that possible?
Yes.
I think that's what we should do, instead of waiting any longer.
And, and I think we need to do it now, while we're on it, we'll come back to the other uh, items on the agenda, I'm, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the annexation agreement, uh, and the, uh, uh, you, ETJ, uh, that were, that in our opinion was annexed in the Wake Forest, uh, illegally.
You're saying do it now versus wait till the end of the meeting?
That's, I say we do it now.
I'm with Jackie, let's just do it, come back, don't stay on it for hours and hours. Or do it at the end of the meeting.
I think you, I think you should do it now, you should, uh, you should recess and take executive.
Let's do it then. Then I second Jackie. I second Jackie.
Okay. So I got a, a motion, uh, and a second, and my understanding of motion, Jackie, is that we will go into closed session now?
Yes.
And, uh, and then resume after the closed session, the meeting?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Uh, so I got a motion, a second, is any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
I think we need a roll call on that, I believe, uh, Robin.
Mr. Mayor, for the record?
Yes.
This would be North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, point eleven, three.
Thank you, Dave, appreciate that.
And also, Mayor, if we could please not- And also, Mayor, if we could please not begin discussion until I'm certain we're no longer live.
Yeah, what I, what we do is, uh, we'll go, uh, when we go into closed session, we'll take a, a recess until you, uh, let us know. All right, so just, you ready to do the roll call?
Starting with Mayor Proton Medley, how do you vote?
Okay, so am I voting I, like yes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Commissioner Sneed?
Aye.
Commissioner Sutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Vilga?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, Mayor, that is a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to, uh, go in the close. Okay, I see the live button there. Thank you, uh, uh, citizens for waiting till we come back from closed session there. Uh, we will continue with our agenda items and number two, Kelly, which is Calis Farms reimbursement, uh, would you like to pick up there?
Sure, Mayor, um, so the next item is, uh, a follow-up from a November two thousand nineteen approval of the Kalis Falls subdivision development agreement. Um, that, uh, we had several conditions in that approval, including them constructing one half of Roseville Road, widening one half of Roseville Road in the section of area that is what's called the gap between the two entrances of Kalis Falls, and I'll get to a map on that in a second. So since November two thousand nineteen, we have, they've been finalizing their work on it. And then, um, Dave did good work with you all and, uh, you all approved in October of two thousand twenty an ordinance, uh, that allows you to enter into reimbursement agreements to, um, participate with developers in various infrastructure projects. And the purpose of that was not only did you approve the development agreement that they would widen one half, but you also said that you'd be interested in participating in having a complete road built and that the town would build the other half section line. And so that ordinance now allows you to enter into a reimbursement agreement with this developer and any other developers in the future for future special improvements that make improvements in conjunction with developments, uh, into the future. And road widening is a typical one, sometimes extension of water sewer is, but this is a very typical type of reimbursement agreement. It also allows you to pay from your resources the way you want. In this case, since it's a road widening, you would pay from your own impact fees. So we have been working, Dave and I have been working with the developer, Kalis Farms Falls, excuse me, Development, for several months on a development agreement that's been in your package, and it's ready for your consideration. Um, in summary, uh, let me pull up a map as I go through the summary to try and step through this project with you. So I'm gonna take a broad, broad picture here, excuse me, of the project, and this, we're gonna focus on the top half of this map. Here is one entrance of Kalis Falls that you approved, and here is the other entrance of Kalis Falls that was approved. And then in between, there's what's called the gap. And they are widening their road section in front of the development on both sides where they're adjacent to the road. But the gap, if you had not entered into the agreement to have them widen, it would have transitioned from what is called out in your CTP, uh, a three-lane road with shoulders um, and, and a sidewalk, it would have narrowed into a two-lane road through the gap and then brought back out to a three-lane road. I think that's why you said you wanted to go ahead and try to get a complete road project. So this agreement calls for, and I hope you can see that, that this section road from starting here, the edge of their property to this section here, the edge of the other side of property, this gap would be entirely widened to match the sections that's required for their development.
On both sides.
On both sides, complete widening project. And they're gonna be responsible for one half, and we're gonna be responsible for the other half. As part of that, we also taking our responsibility to help entertain any of the right-of-way and purchasing the right-of-way for that, and also any associated engineering and construction management with our app. So let me go through what the project looks like in a little bit detail if you're interested.
Just, just to be clear, Kelly.
What's that?
Just to be clear, they're paying for the gap side?
They're paying for a half.
Uh, we mean half.
It's for the widening.
I, I know, we pay for the opposite side of the road, is that right?
That's right, that's right.
But, but the, the gap side on their side, they, they covering that whole gap? Or not?
No. Let me try and explain again. This is the gap.
Right.
Here. This is what's defined as a gap, this whole section.
Which needs widening on both sides.
That's right. Your, your mandate to them was they would pay for half of it. And in order to do the full, we had to pay for the other half. Is that what you were asking?
Okay, so, so, so just half, it doesn't matter if it's on one side of the road versus.
That's right. They're participating in half.
Yeah, yeah, Kelly, I, I think it's pretty straightforward. Uh, on page three of what you sent us, paragraph three-one, it says the total cost of the project is one million, three thousand, six, uh, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. That, that includes paying the right-of-ways and everything?
Yes.
All right, and then it says that five hundred and fifty-seven thousand is going, uh, uh, is the reimbursable cost. Are they paying for it and we reimbursing them or we pay?
Right, so this, so this agreement calls for them to do and construct the entire project.
Okay.
And then as they pull building permits, they get a credit.
Okay, now, now, I have, where, is with the math, because on the, on page five, paragraph three-two-three, it says that, uh, the, it, under those circumstances, will, will the reimbursable cost exceed six hundred and ninety-seven thousand?
Right.
Not five fifty-seven, why the discrepancy?
Because it's a hundred and twenty-five percent of the five twenty-seven.
Okay, that makes sense. Then Kelly, I mean, it's a slam dunk, I mean.
No, I have some questions on that slam dunk real quick.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie. I have a couple of questions. So help me understand, in that gap, will that be developed on that development side? Is that going to be developed?
Uh, not as, as of today, but when it does, okay, so let's just pick on this property here.
Mm-hmm.
I'm outlining here. When they come in to develop, we would probably ask for reimbursement of our costs associated with this improvement, because they would have normally done it. So in the future, when this parcel gets developed.
By developer.
Yeah, by a, by a, by a developer.
Gotcha, okay.
They, they, we would, we would say our share of this cost was X, and we would expect reimbursement of that as part of their development cost.
And it's no, it's no issue, Dave, in recovering that is if it gets developed. I mean, if it don't get developed, we'll never get it, but I'm talking about if it gets developed. There's no, there's no issue asking for that reimbursement then.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm not in a position to answer that right now. I'd have to get back to you on that. That is not part of the agreement?
Well, this would be for a future developer.
Future developer.
So what we could imagine, I think Kelly, I think Kelly used the phrase ask. That is, as part of the development, we would seek their contribution to that sort of an idea. Uh, certain, certainly that's, that's fine. Uh, the other way this could have been approached is via assessment, which is a formal way of making sure that these uh, properties are charged with that obligation in the future. And then the final way that everyone ends up paying for it is that future development will be required to pay their own impact fees and have their own improvements to make, and it's difficult to forecast what those are going to be.
If a developer comes to us and we, uh, create a development agreement and they do not, uh, uh, agree to pay their share of what we've already done, we, do we have grounds to not approve the project?
Of course, I hope.
So, so you're asking me a hypothetical that's probably layered inside of other hypotheticals? So would the, would the project come in and request a rezoning, for example? If the project came in and needed a rezoning, you all would have a legislative decision to make uh, upon which the applicant could offer various, uh, conditions. North Carolina law does not allow you to impose an impact fee as a condition. There is nothing, however, that prevents a developer or a property owner from unilaterally offering that on their own.
So how do we protect ourselves? That seems very open to me.
Well, it's, well, we can, we can, that's why it's great to have a closed session. So what are we going to do along Main Street? Uh, do all the property owners along Main Street have to pay for the improvements that we are going to make along Main Street?
Yeah.
Well, we're getting a grant too for Main Street, so I think that's a little different scenario.
Well, it's a fifty-fifty grant, this is a fifty-fifty grant. Uh, just, I'm working through that thought process. Sometimes we, we provide public infrastructure in hopes that it attracts development, and other times we look for, uh, a contribution from future development to be made. Usually that is captured in either impact fees, which we already use. And in this case, the impact fee would essentially go to replenish the impact fees that we're currently paying out in credits. Or it would happen in the form of assessments, which is a statutory process where we would lean up all of these, uh, uh, properties as part of this project, but that has not been in the scope of what, uh, the staff has been working on.
If I may, my previous experience in my other life with a different law, it was usually a ten-year, it's not that in North Carolina. You had the ability to ask if the approval is made over somewhere within ten years, but there's always a risk that you may not get reimbursed, but the fact is, you've also made a policy decision to improve this road now instead of waiting for development. And, and there's some value to that if you don't believe these properties are gonna improve anytime in the near future, who knows what that's gonna be. And so what you're trying to do is make sure that this road, I think that's what you talked about in November of two thousand nineteen, flows properly, and, and, and you wanna make these improvements, so there is a good stretch of road here that you're taking advantage of three-quarters of, of, of part of Roseville Road being improved by a developer, and we're participating at twenty-five percent, because it's further expensive than their property lines. Um, so, so, yeah, there might, I mean, Dave, Dave brought up a good point, there might be some risk, but the fact is, if you, if you got pressured down the line and you said this is a worthwhile project, you would, you lose the opportunity to get decent prices going in with the developer. Uh, you wouldn't have the opportunity to do reimbursement credits, which would be paid out over time, you would pay upfront, so, so um, and, and in my opinion, you would make every effort when that parcel develops to try and get reimbursed. But I, I don't know if you will or not. I mean, I can't say that quickly, I guess, is what I'm.
Yeah, I was thinking, Dave, in the, um, request to, um, for, for zoning, I guess. We do have, we, we can't ask for that, we could ask for that, right? And if, if, uh, they don't, if they don't, uh, grant that request, we don't have to prove to be rezoned.
So the, the North Carolina courts have ruled that you cannot impose impact fees as part of a rezoning.
Right.
Now, that has always applied to towns that don't have impact fees. And Kelly, you can correct me here on this. We would expect that properties that develop along this stretch will have impact fees to pay to the town regardless of what goes on on the road.
That's right. It's, it's no group.
But Roseville doesn't have to ask, we always get paid.
They're built in.
Correct.
So I have a question, clarifying the fifty percent, because when I look at these last couple pages where American Engineering has broken down the cost for each party, it doesn't look like fifty percent. Can you explain that?
Our, our, our half, our half includes the sidewalk. So the, the section that we're, they're building is the sidewalk part, so that's why there's additional cost, is the sidewalk.
Is that what the, okay, what part, what part are you referring to, Kelly?
Under pricing. So what are you talking about?
You have that sheet for clarity, so we.
I actually have it hanging up, let me get it up here.
Michelle, are you talking about page one of the, um, exhibit C?
No, I'm on, there's a letter, there's two letters towards the end of your packet.
Gotcha.
American Engineering, I'm looking at those two.
Yeah.
And you're talking about the sidewalk on the Kalis Farms side?
So here, here's our pricing for our section. So we've, we've agreed to pay for the easement costs, a hundred thousand, okay?
Why, why, why aren't we explaining that?
Dave, you wanna explain that?
Uh, the condition that was imposed at the time of the approval of Kalis Falls had their obligation to construct the additional, uh, part of the road conditioned upon there being already acquired the necessary right-of-way. So this was always something that was on the town's side of the ledger.
So we made an agreement based on an assumed access? Or had that not been vetted? Help me understand that?
Correct, the condition, and, and I don't have the language of the zoning condition, uh, Mr. Johnson may have it. Essentially, the condition provides that, uh, to the extent that the, that the right-of-way is available, they were obligated to construct it.
To address concerns related to the timing of future Roseville road widening, specifically as it relates to that portion of Roseville Road frontage between the north and southern boundaries of subject property that is not part of this application, the Roseville right-of-way gap, the developer shall widen the Roseville right-of-way gap to one-half of its ultimate section. Developers obligations here under a subject to N C D O T approval and there being sufficient right-of-way and associated easements for such improvements at the time the developers perform in its other roadway widening obligations for the subject property. So subject two is the key.
Yeah, the students say we were paying for it, I, I guess that's not clear from that language.
I didn't, uh, Commissioner Sutton, it, it wouldn't necessarily have had to have been us, it could have been D O T. It could have been a determination that existing right-of-way was already there, but when the engineer's report came back, there was not enough right-of-way for the improvements that were proposed. And so that leaves the town in the position of either waiving the condition that is, there isn't enough easement, therefore the condition doesn't kick in, or in this case, we're going to make sure that the right-of-way is there, the easements are there, and therefore we can hold the developer to the obligation.
To the obligation to build, not to the obligation of splitting the cost.
The, correct, the obligation to do it at all. If there, if there weren't the right-of-way there, the developer in theory would not have had to have done it at all. And likewise, the sidewalk in the cross-section was not going to be a requirement, uh, in our plan, and that is something that we added on as an extra in order to get the ultimate width that is now what the town is looking for. And so that is also on the town's side of the ledger.
So we took the sidewalk out, it would be more of a split, is that what you're saying?
Sidewalk is, um.
Hundred thousand dollars difference.
Yeah, it's twenty-eight and twenty-five for the sidewalk and some extra widening of land, and then there's extra striping associated, so this is our cost here for the construction.
And, and the condition is not fifty percent, the condition is building one-half of the road. And and the condition is not fifty percent. The condition is building one half of the road, but not necessarily the same amount of dollars.
Yeah, when you say pay for half, I interpret that as pay for half of the cost of building the road. So I just want to make sure we're clarifying when we're talking about half, what we're talking about. And how wide will the road be? I'm sorry, I don't see that. It's probably here. I just don't see it in my thing right away.
Okay, hang on just a second.
And if you don't have the thing, how many lanes is it a turn? It's turn lane and then a single lane on each either side of the turn lane?
There's the cross section. This might be better down here. So you have. A lane, turn lane, lane. This marks out the additional pavement needed, the additional shoulder needed. Curb on this side. That's part of our cost and a sidewalk. Does that clear that cross section?
It's one lane going each direction and a turn lane in the middle. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha. And there's a sidewalk on one side only?
Yep, and it connects to one that they're building on their side.
There's one sidewalk on one.
Here's their site. Here's the sidewalk they're building and the widening of their project. Entrance their subdivision, sidewalk, 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 the start of the start of the gaps right here. So the sidewalk continues through the gap. Through the gap. All the way down. To the end of the gap and picks up where they're building it. On their development. It goes through both of their entrances.
To the end of the development.
That's right.
But it's on one side of the roadway. I'm just clarifying that.
That's right.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Thanks. I'm sorry. Will there ever be a sidewalk on the other side?
So there probably will be because. Where is the one that you just approved? Is it this? Or is it this?
Yeah, I see it.
Yep, they will be they will be building some sidewalk in here. That's it. So that that side will happen as it develops. There's more property owners throughout. So somewhere down the line. If you're gonna want to want to do both sides, you may have to do it on your own because these folks. Unless they develop those out, you know, they won't do sidewalk for a while. On that side.
Okay.
So I do have a question about the sidewalk too, and it's kind of a side question. Is that something we could tweak in our? I guess our agreements, not to them specifically, but any future projects that. If we're going to share costs or reimburse costs or anything else, that we could have them put in pedestrian access as well. To like spell that out, that they would have to pay for that part of it as well.
The sidewalk piece?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should have been. We probably should have been a little bit more. We could have probably negotiated a little bit more that night. Yes.
Yeah, I'm I'm like, just for future reference, that's all. I mean, I don't know if we could put it in our anything, you know.
Didn't we just put that in the in the in the LDO we're talking about last week, Kelly? Wasn't that something about sidewalks on both sides?
Yeah, well, we're gonna talk about that in the residential subdivisions. But yeah, Paul's point is in things like this. And we do a development agreement. Spell it out a little bit more than just say half the street.
Right, right. But this this is a good start. I mean, this this definitely covers us, but just for future, if we could add in additional, yeah. Sorry.
Go ahead.
The comment that I that I wanted to point out here is that this, the item that we have on our agenda. Is an oversizing agreement or a reimbursement agreement. So we were able to leverage the construction activity of the developer who is already going to be on site. To do public work on our behalf with the taxpayers' money. It is not technically what you have before you is not an exaction. Or some sort of concession by the developer. It's a it's a it's a way to expand the scope in order to get more bang for your buck with impact fee dollars. And so the developers' obligations were limited to what was contained in their TIA. As part of their impacts that their development was creating. And so the town could not have unilaterally required them. Perhaps, there there's a legal argument to be made on this. To do more than what their impacts were likely to be. For example, off-site improvements, which is what the gap is. The gap is entirely off their site.
That's a good point. Thank you, Dave, for that. I have a question, though, for, and this is probably for Kelly or Danny. American Engineering, are they a firm that we just use all the time? I just don't remember seeing the name. I'm just trying to clarify something.
They're the developer's engineer. But we we had we had all their costs checked by our town engineer.
By our engineer?
Yes. So they they did all the engineering work and then we had everything ran through all the quantities, all the estimates or anything. And and all their work was rechecked by our town engineer.
So thank you for that. I I bring this point up and I bring it up a lot and I'll continue to bring it up. As long as I sit on this board. I think it's important to always get more than one estimate. I think I've expressed that over and over and over and over. Even though our town engineer checked it out to make sure the numbers are valid, and I know construction costs are up. But I think it's important that we make sure that we're diversifying who we're using and that we're getting more than one quote. I I am not a believer in one quote ever for anything. Um, so that I am expressing as a concern. And moving forward, I really want to see us get more than one quote, even when we're working with the developer. I I just think that's the fair way to do business.
That's an excellent point. In this case, it'll be bid out. This will be a bid out project.
Right.
This will be publicly bid. Those are just.
I understand. I understand that to do the work, but this engineering company. They're giving us an estimate of what the construction cost will be, right?
They're giving an estimate to their client, which is the developer. And so the developer is in for as much as we're in. And then we checked it with our with our engineer just to make sure that he knows what he's talking about. But there's no incentive. There's no incentive to cheat on this one because the developer is having to pay the same thing.
I got you, but I just don't want us to always go back to the same well. And I know this was a little bit different. But I just am am stating that I want to see us, when we're looking for vendors to do work for the town of Roseville. That we're doing our due diligence in getting the three estimates from different companies and to make sure that we're adding women and minorities to that mix. Because I think that's been an oversight way, way, way too long. Thank you.
Any other questions? So between Dave and Rob and I, and Rob, and I'm gonna ask you to lead this. We'll make sure the exhibits are complete. For the agreement and if you do, we'll put it on the March second board meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have on chaos. Set item. Amy, are you in?
I am here. Good evening, everybody. I have the several items coming up here. I don't expect these to take very long, but wanted to make sure that you all have the opportunity to fully understand these issues. And have the opportunity to ask any questions about them before they are brought before you for any action. So the first one I want to start with is an amendment to the town's personnel policy. Like many employers, both public and private, the town limits the amount of vacation leave. That an employee can roll over into each new calendar year. Over the years I've been here, when I first started, it was probably around three to five people per year that were maxing out. Over the years, I've seen that number increase and twenty twenty, we had the about fourteen, which is about thirty three percent. Of our workforce who were at the max for vacation leave accrual. So what's driving this was one of the questions to be asked. And I think part of it was the pandemic. People weren't taking vacation as much because there's really nowhere you can go. But the other factor that we found was really driving this seemed to be coming from overtime. As a government employer. The town has the option of compensating an employee who works overtime in one of two forms. The town can either compensate them with overtime pay at time and a half of their regular rate. Which is what private companies typically do. Or as a government employer, the town has the option to compensate the employee at time and a half compensatory leave. So for several years now, the town has compensated overtime in that way with compensatory leave. So for example, if an employee works four hours of overtime, they would receive time and a half or six hours of compensatory leave. Now, where this comes into the policy proposal that's before you. Is that this overtime and this accrual of compensatory leave. Means that some of our less tenured employees who work a lot of overtime. Are very quickly reaching that maximum accrual for vacation. And there is another policy in the within the town's personnel policy. That will allow employees to take that excess vacation leave. And roll it over or transfer it to vacation leave. So for instance, if the maximum is two hundred and forty hours and an employee has two hundred and fifty. At the end of the year, that employee can take those extra ten hours and transfer it to sick leave. That's a benefit to the employee because sick leave can count towards service credit for retirement. The one caveat to that is that in order to be eligible to do that rollover. In the way the current policy is written, the employee must use five days of vacation year, five days of vacation leave during that calendar year. So what that means is that employees who very frequently work overtime. Find it very difficult to arrange their schedules so that they can both burn out all of their compensatory leave and also use the five days of vacation. So where did that policy come from? Many years ago, there was a template personnel policy throughout the state of North Carolina, and many units adopted it, including Roseville. So that five day policy is fairly common across the state. But over time, some units have revised their policies. And in a survey of the units in Wake County, we have discovered that most of those. Units do not have a five day usage requirement. So that they allow employees to roll over that excess leave without any requirement to use vacation during the calendar year. So that's where we are here. And your packet was a marked up version of that policy. That would remove the five day requirement for employees. For the vacation leave and then it made a few other technical corrections as well about the timing of the actual. Rollover period. So that's a proposal there for you. Was that clear? Are there any questions about the policy or any of the alternatives that are available to us?
That was clear to me, but I do have one question, Amy. Did this affect any employees in twenty twenty with COVID? Did anybody reach their max and they weren't able to take the five days?
So we we've been dealing with this a long time now. So we do send a reminder out at least once a year, if not multiple times a year, to employees who look like they're going to reach the maximum. To say, hey, you're getting close. You really need to schedule, make sure you schedule some time and take your five days that you need to take. Over the years, occasionally we we do find somebody will get caught in the net for the first time. And we try to work with them to do sort of an exchange of leave to make sure that they qualify. So I have never had to write off somebody's leave, fortunately, over the years. Usually that first time they get caught in the net is enough of a warning that it doesn't happen again and they've they stay on top of it and make sure that they arrange the schedule as they need. What's been happening, though, is that most of these employees are police officers. And a lot of that's due to the training that they're receiving and a lot of training hours, which is a good thing. We certainly don't want to discourage that. And then the special events that they work as well. So. Again, just trying to get that schedule so that they can burn out that compensatory time that they're earning at time and a half. So even if they they work over, it takes, you know, another fifty percent to burn it off. So for to get them to burn that out as well as the vacation tends to be a little difficult at times.
So anybody that was affected in twenty twenty, you are working with them because they weren't able to take that time off because of COVID.
That's right. We we did not have anybody. We had people whose time we did roll over to sick. There were about fourteen employees that we did do that to, but nobody lost. Nobody lost their hours this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Amy, this policy we have in Roseville is it. It's not as common as it is in other municipalities. In other words, our neighbors don't follow the same. What we want to adopt is more in line to what the benefits of neighboring. Neighboring workers get, right? So we've becoming more common with. You know, I always always think, you know, when you live in and work in somewhere like Wake County, you got to be competitive with, you know, especially. Labor issues and stuff. If you're not, then you're gonna, all these little things kind of add up to. You know, kind of your. You know, your desire to work in one place or the other. And and I would love to see us more in line with the community that we we have to compete with. For our employees than to be out of line and 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 create issues.
That's right. You know, without surveying all four hundred plus municipalities in the state. Outside of Wake County, you'd probably find some that have it and some that don't. But you're right, from all the ones that we've looked at here in Wake County, they seem to not have that that requirement to use the vacation during the year.
I just have a couple of questions, Amy, just to clarify. So the comp time is for hourly employees or all employees?
Right, so good question. We do have a handful of employees who are considered exempt under the Fair Labor Standards Act. So those employees who are exempt do not earn compensatory time in any way. There is no overtime. They are purely salaried employees. So this does apply only to hourly employees.
Okay, good. And then my other question is, did you say two hundred and forty hours can be carried over each year? That's the maximum? Did I hear you right?
Yes, actually, it's thirty days. So it's two hundred and forty hours for office employees. But I believe that's two hundred and fifty two hours for our sworn law enforcement officers on the on the ship's schedule.
Gotcha. And then did you say that they have to take five days or those consecutive days or just they don't have to be consecutive?
No.
And the ask is to remove that five day requirement?
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks for clarifying those. I'm good.
Okay, we'll move on. We'll probably put this one on the March second agenda also for approval.
Yeah, move on to the next one, Amy.
All right, next one is some upcoming budget amendments. So Kelly and I are gonna split this a little bit, but I can give you overview here. You know, we had a lot of developments come in here for review by engineers. Some other work with the condemnation issue in Kalas Falls. So in the planning department budget, they have overrun some of that development services funding that they have. So we're asking to put in some additional funds for that purpose. All of these expenditures are refunded by developers. These are all things that. We pay. A good example is the traffic impact analysis. We pay for it, but then the developer. A good example is the traffic impact analysis. Um, we pay for it, but then the developer reimburses us for the cost of that. So all of these, uh, this particular one is, uh, expenditures completely offset by anticipated revenues from the developers. Second item is the farm, the master plan for that project, uh, was budgeted last year um, using funds from those park fees, the capital park fees. Um, a hundred, just over a hundred thousand dollars was budgeted at June thirtieth. Uh, we had paid out about eighty thousand dollars, uh, which left twenty thousand unspent. June thirtieth came and went. This was an annual appropriation. So June thirtieth, that twenty thousand dollars disappeared of budget. It reverted back to the park's fee fund balance. Since that time, uh, we have received those final bills from the vendor. Uh, but there's no budget there to pay them currently. So what we're asking is if you would reappropriate that twenty thousand dollars, uh, so that we can pay these final bills for that master plan.
How much are those final bills? I'm sorry, how much are the final bills?
Uh, there, I believe they're just shy of twenty thousand. That's around eighteen something. Uh, and the next item is, uh, regarding the property acquisition for the Woodleaf property on Young Street. So detailed in the cover sheet are five, uh, items associated with the acquisition that, um, represents some preliminary expenditures before any closing might occur on that property. Um, that includes earnest money appraisal. If we decide to go with debt financing, there's some application fees with the LGC. Typically, there's some, uh, legal services that go along with that as well. Um, and then the engineering review, um, there's some due diligence work we're anticipating to do on that property. Um, it's on this list, it's labeled as phase one, which is an in-depth review of site characteristics. And it's meant to answer the question, is the site adequate, uh, to build upon for our purposes? So we anticipate those four, um, as being, uh, expenditures that we would request some funding for, they total to just over fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the last item, which is phase two, is one that's an optional expenditure. You could do that now, you could do that later. So I'm gonna let Kelly explain what that is and, and what would, what the purpose of it.
Oh, the, uh, our engineer, our town engineer is doing the actual work on the due diligence and then they recommend it's best practices in their opinion to go ahead and do some pricing out of utilities and roads and, uh, cost developments, site developments while they're out there and working on it. Uh, it might be of interest to you. It might go into decision making as to whether you want to buy the property or not. But to do all that and that's preparing that schematic, it's looking at the kind of layouts that they have presented. Uh, it's about sixteen thousand dollars. I, I would not make my decision whether you want to buy it based upon it, but could it be helpful uh, to do it now while we're out there and get some ideas for future planning? What we're looking at as far as road connectivity pricing, utility instruct, in, infrastructure improvements. Um, certainly it's going to be useful, help, helpful information. I just don't know if it's something you want to know now or if you want to wait for a moment do it some other time, but it will be done somewhere down the line.
We're getting a bargain price at this point?
Uh, you're, you're getting a little bit because they're already out there doing their hourly meeting. So they're going to use some of their subs in this.
All about a bargain.
Eventually we've got to have it done anyway, right?
Yep, yep.
If they're already out there, I'd say go ahead and move forward.
We're bringing the cost, a lot of the work is with the cost estimator. So it's working with the subs and then talking about what, what do we got kind of, and then bringing this estimator into the price, into the mix. And so what we would have at the end of the due diligence period is not only the report as to what they found, but also then a report as to what are some probable costs associated with developing the site.
Okay.
If you're all good with that, we'll include that and get them started on that part. Okay.
Right.
You were going to do the police camera grants.
Oh, did I skip that? Oh, I didn't. That's not, oh, that's not on my printed version. I'm so behind. Thank you. Yes, there is a grant, um, that the police department received from the governor's crime commission to put some security cameras at the, uh, Roseville High School. So, uh, this would just be to appropriate those grant funds and a budget for those so that they could go ahead and, and move along with that project. Thank you. Uh, finally, part B of this, uh, item is a reimbursement resolution. Uh, it's been quite a while, uh, but back when we bought that hundred and sixteen acres on Lewisburg Road for the farm, um, you also adopted a reimbursement resolution. Uh, what that does, um, and what it would do in this case, it's for the Woodleaf property. So that if you decide that you want to debt finance the purchase of this land, um, with this resolution, it would give you the ability to go back and any of the expenditures associated with the purchase that you've already made or will make associated with, or associated with the, uh, land acquisition, you would be able to include that in the debt finances. Um, so it's just a way to cover yourself if you decide you, you want to debt finance this, um, and maintain it as debt to carry forward and pay it in that manner. Uh, it just increases your options and your ability to leverage existing funds.
And I think, yeah, I think we'll be clear that we don't know the answer yet. I think, yeah, there's been some talks that we'll use some proceeds from sales of other property, but by, as we go through the budget development, we'll have at least a couple more stops on this conversation. How do you want to fund it? Um, but this does, as Amy says, gives you that opportunity to debt finance everything if you are so inclined, but it does not put you in a place that you have to.
Right. That's right. It just, it, it keeps your options to open to the widest degree possible. All right.
Okay, those will be, those will be on the next agenda also.
Yep. Okay. The third item I have is GFL contract amendment. Uh, this is a little earlier this year than we have in the past. Um, the last couple of years, we have had, uh, a request from GFL or Waste Industries to, um, add a recycling fee to our already pre-bid, um, fees. Um, a lot of this is due to the challenges that they have had with finding markets for their recycling materials. Uh, several years ago, that stream dried up. A lot of it was going overseas and not taking it anymore. Um, this is turning out to be, uh, a, a long-term issue of figuring out what to do with these co-mingled recycled materials and, and how best to, to deal with those. So GFL is still dealing with this issue as are everyone else, as is everyone else. Um, so they are, uh, requesting that they, that the fee, the additional two dollars and twenty cent fee per cart continue um, for this upcoming fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, that it is the same amount that, that we're paying currently, um, for FY twenty-twenty-one.
And that's already built in, so it really, uh, our citizens will not be affected by it.
Right.
Because it was already built in, uh, as a cushion before. So, uh, it, it really means nothing to them. Uh, their, uh, annual waste, uh, fee that is now in their tax records or in that tax bill will not go up.
Um, well, the, the fee, the amount that the town is paying would does not change with this. Um, I will tell you last, you know, last year when we had this conversation, um, based on the analysis we'd done at the time, uh, it, I had made, I'd made the estimation that it looked like we would be able to cover that fee with the amount we had on hand. Um, again, with this budget process, as we get a little bit deeper into it, we will updating that analysis to make sure that that twenty-two dollars does adequately cover the town's costs. Um, I will tell you that with our new billing method, uh, it is so much more efficient and effective than what we used to do. We, we, our, our collection is up so much. Um, it's, and, and the administration of it is, is so much easier. Um, so I, I, I can't give you a firm commitment on that yet until I really dive into those numbers as we go into the budget process. Um, but that's certainly something we'll be looking at.
Okay.
So will that item be on the consent agenda? Is that what we're going through? Are these planned consent agenda items or will they be up for us to take a vote on some of these? It's going to be.
Uh, I, I, if, if everything, if, if there aren't any issues, they can go on consent, but if any of these you'd rather see broken out, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I think it's important to note the cost would affect our citizens and that not be a consent item. If it, if there is a change, if not, then obviously then consent.
All right. Anything else on that one? Okay. Last one is really exciting. Capitalization policy. Um, so in preparing the financial statements, uh, one of the things we have to do is depreciate the town's capital assets, things like land and buildings and roads and and rights away and all kinds of good things. Um, the last time this policy was, uh, put together was over fifteen years ago. And it's just good to go back and review these policies every now and then and make sure that we're keeping up with inflation and any other changes, um, and recommendations. And that we are consistent with any, uh, conditions that might be put on us from any federal grants, particularly as we're expecting some large dollars coming in. So based on that, um, and doing a survey of some other municipalities in North Carolina, they're proposing this new schedule. Uh, it's in, I won't go through because it's, it's, it's pretty dry. Um, but basically up, up, upping some of the thresholds for when something is considered a fixed asset. Uh, I did have Cherry Becker staff there, our new, uh, financial, uh, auditor. Take a look at this and make sure that they were okay with that and they had no issues. So they gave, they've given it their blessing. Uh, so really this is just presented to you because it really is a board decision, um, in terms of what this policy should be. But this is my recommendation to you for, for your consideration. Um, and again, if, if this is amenable, we'd have this on the next agenda for March second.
And I don't have it in front of me, but what is the, what is the, uh, amount for to, to be considered a capitalization?
Yep. So it's different for different things. Um, right now, most of it is five thousand. Um, what we're looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, looking at upping that for infrastructure and for buildings.
Okay.
So if we buy a shed, a small shed, it wouldn't have to go on the fixed asset list, for example.
Amy, does this, uh, start addressing some of the organizational assessment recommendation that talked about developing a formal asset management program? Is this building on that?
Yeah, well, in a way it is, um, because, um, and that's also part of our, uh, one of the things that was in this year's budget is a new financial system. So we have, and finance staff, we've been very busy working on that. Um, and one of the things I love about it is it has a fixed asset module. So I have taken my old spreadsheets and, um, worked on putting that together. So it's going into this new system, um, which, uh, because of where it is in the system, uh, multiple people, we'd be able to get access to it. So they could see a list of the fixed assets we have in terms of building and land and vehicles and things, things like that. Right. There's no other questions. Uh, that is all I have.
Ronnie, we've been going at this for a couple of hours. Let's take a five-minute break before we have the last one. So we can go to the restroom.
Okay, sounds good. So let's, 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 uh, check back at nine, ten. So we'll take a five-minute recess.
Thank you. Well, if you're talking, Ronnie, you're on mute.
Thank you. I, I called the meeting back to order. And I think Kelly, the last item on the agenda is the fire study update. Do you want to start that off, kick that off?
Sure, I can start and then I'm going to ask that, uh, you, Jackie and April participate in this also. Um, so we had our, uh, fire study completed at the end of last year. Um, with the eight recommendations of which then I went and threw, I, I threw, evaluated the recommendations and provided you my guidance on how to implement those. And then included that was that, uh, the, a small working group should reconvene and review those recommendations uh, and start talking again of the working group, including staffs of the fire district, fire department group, department, excuse me, the town and then the representatives of the two boards. So we've had, uh, meetings of those two groups. The first meeting took place, uh, for Roseville participants were Mayor Curran, Jackie Wilson, April Sneed. Um, and the conversation uh, that took place in summary, uh, was focused on how can we move along or is it possible to move along the, uh, conversion of the fire department employees sooner than what the consultant recommended? Uh, if you remember, the report was that the fire department employees should not be converted to town employees until a full conversion happens and a, and a consultant recommended that to take place in approximately five years or so.
And, and Kelly also attending that meeting were, uh, Spence Jones, the chair, uh, Rodney Privet, Donnie Lawrence, Jerry Edens, Edens and, uh, Joel Keith.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And the fire department board.
Thank you. So, uh, coming out of that meeting, the group agreed to bring back Greg Grayson and remeet with them, him again and ask that very specific question. And then, and the, the reasoning was that when, um, the fire board heard the report from Mr. Grayson, uh, they decided that they still wanted to try and move as quick as possible on the employee, the consolidation effort. And, uh, I believe that they actually held a meeting and held and had some discussion and made a motion to that effect. I've not seen those minutes, but, uh, that's what has been conveyed to us that they have still believe that it's a, it's an important task that needs to happen uh, very soon and much sooner than the five years. So, uh, Mr. Grayson agreed to, uh, meet again with the small working group. Uh, we met Friday afternoon. Uh, same group. And then we had in the room was Greg Grayson and then he brought, um,
TJ. His first name, his initials were TJ. I don't remember his last name.
TJ DeLuca from the municipal league who oversees the workers' comp program. And also is overseeing the liability insurance program. He's, he's part of it. So this is where, um, I, as a participant, I'm trying to remember most everything came out of that meeting. But, um, uh, Mr. Grayson did say that, uh, the employees could become town employees sooner. But, uh, part of that and why Mr. DeLuca was with him was that it was important to note that it just couldn't be the full-time employees. It had to be every employee and every volunteer that would have to transition to be supervised by the town to qualify for the workers' comp program, um, and the, well, the workers' comp program. Um, and so it was a little bit more than just eleven employees. It was eleven employees, all the part-time employees, and then also all the volunteers. Um, the discussion went many ways about insurance, uh, about buildings, um, about how to proceed. Uh, it went about leadership and who, who should be doing this and how. Uh, but at the end of the day, I think. But at the end of the day, I think at the end of the meeting. And this is where I want the other three to participate in this conversation. I think they want first mentally giving an update to the rest of the board on where everything stands. And secondly, start talking about. That is our interest from the town board to go ahead and start moving. Probably on a contract. With the department on how to make the conversion. Including the employees coming over, but ultimately the contract also steps out. Specific actions that need to be taken. Over a course of period of time when ultimately the town would convert and own and operate the entire fire department. The fire department board still would like to, um. Own the buildings and equipment for a short period of time, not for very long, it didn't sound like. And that can occur, the town could enter into, in this contractual relationship into a lease arrangement. Where the equipment and buildings would be leased by the board, so that is possible. What's that?
By the town board or by the fire?
Yes, yes, the, so essentially, the, the, the crux of conversation. In general was how do you structure a contract between the town and the fire board? On. Transitioning employees over and then ultimately all assets over and all, and then I'm assuming dissolution of the. District.
Yes.
And. Everybody in that meeting Friday, I got the sense that all that could be done in two years or so. Generally, I got the impression.
Two years or so, I mean, two years or less.
Um, I still think that's ambitious, but yes. Yes. So Jackie, Ronnie, April, what did I miss or what would you like to add?
If, if I can speak, the sense of urgency, as you all know, i- is, has to do with the. Full-time employees, we have eleven full-time employees. Of which five have already put in applications. At two of a close municipal fire departments, so they can get benefits. Four have been interviewed, the fifth one filled out the application wrong is the only reason he has not been interviewed. We're going to lose people if we don't do something, uh, pretty quickly. Uh, and as, uh, one, uh, board member said to me today, you know, the sense of urgency. Needs to be there because the majority of our calls are first responder calls. And if you're laying on the carpet in their living room of a heart attack. And some kid shows up and he's on his first responder call. Because our experienced EMTs and paramedics are no longer there, you know, somebody's gonna die. Uh, it's that simple. But it's also very complicated as Kelly has said. Because volunteers must be treated also as employees because they have to have workman's comp. So, and we have roughly twenty-seven volunteers at this time, they don't get paid except a per diem. Uh, for each call that they make. They make so many calls a year and we give them a check or the board gives them a check. Uh, at the end of the year for the calls that, that they make. It's, uh. As far as leasing the equipment as we move down the road, you know, that, and the, and the building, you know, they could lease it to us for one dollar. You know, that, that's not a cost. Issue. But losing employees and we will lose experienced employees. Is the issue. And the new people that we hire, which is time-consuming and expensive, once they get their certifications, they'll go someplace else too. And so we're in a catch twenty-two if we don't do something. April, you got anything that you could add to that and Ronnie?
I asked, well, in a conversation, it came up that this could, um, as Kelly had stated. Potentially be moved along to happen in two years. By twenty-three. So they said that if something like that were to happen, that it would be, uh, moving phases. You could bring the employees over first and then work on the assets just to make sure that the employees. Are secured in here, you know, with the town of Roseville. As far as the leasing of the equipments, uh, he said that if. In his recommendation, if that's something that had to happen, uh, it would be very interim. Before the town takes it over. So, uh, I, I spoke with Joel Keith today, he shared with me that he spoke with majority of you all. And again, he's reiterating what, uh, Jackie is saying, but he also reiterated that. They are willing to do whatever they need to do to make this happen.
Also spoken with him as well as Rodney Privet. And Ri- as the chief, he said he, that, that he's willing, you know, if, if the town sees a need for a full-time. Chief, uh, he'd be glad to step aside, he wants what's best for Roseville. The, uh, we, the town board, I'm sorry, the fire department board met last week and. As the liaison between us and them, I went to that meeting and every one of the people on that board. Have, have the same opinion and spirit of cooperation. That, you know, they'll be glad to stay on as, as advisory in, in regard to the equipment. And the building, whatever you want, if you need them, but they do not wanna leave. They, they do not want Roseville to lose their, uh, and they, they do have an excellent, uh, base of them. Uh, uh, experienced personnel, they don't want to lose them to other municipalities.
So, so I need to ask a question, what happens with the fire board? That seems to be the distinction here. Kinda like, I don't know, I just felt like we were talking about eleven employees now to expand it to a possibility of the rest of them. Obviously with the workers' comp situation, but what's the deal with the fire board? I, I don't understand why that be a separate entity, what am I missing?
We, we don't, you, you don't need two boards. If, if, if these employees are answering to the town. They're basically answering to a fire chief who's answering to Kelly, who's answering to us.
So the fire board wouldn't exist anymore? That's not what I heard.
Unless we wanted them as an advisory board to us.
I wasn't.
Be an advisory only.
So I had a question about the, um, insurance, um, the last meeting we had. Looks like twelve-one, they were talking about biggest issues being. Part of the retirement system and lack of long-term disability. Wasn't there something in that where they would have to start the process and then it, in five years, they'd be eligible for the retirement? Is that, that's the one, one of the questions I had about that.
Yeah, that, that would be vested, like, anyway, that, that goes, that goes, uh, for, uh, to work for, uh, the, the, uh. The city, I mean, you, you're not vested. A certain amount of time, man. And, and, you know, the longer the way they wait for that. The, the longer it takes for them to get invested, uh, or vested. You know, so they, you know, when you got, uh, guys in their thirties and forties, they, they wanna get on the pension plan soon. So they can retire in their, in their sixties.
Clarify, Paul, I'm sorry, when you're done, I'm sorry.
That's fine, no, I just wanna make sure, I, I just wanna clarify that too, I just wanna make sure what we're talking about here, because, um, I'm hearing. Workers' comp, long-term disability and retirement, so the retirement makes sense, the long-term disability and the workers' comp, like how do those two? Work out differently or are they the same thing?
No, they're different, but, and, and just so you know. Last week also Jackie can confirm that they did go ahead and, and add long-term disability. As a benefit, so that has been added effectively immediately, Jackie, or is it July one?
I was told by Rodney that they finalized that today, I believe.
That's good.
Workers' comp would cover you in accidents, but it's not a long-term disability. So it's more as you're out. Long-term disability is more of a, almost a sense of a permanent type of disability.
Does that only cover in the full-time people right now, like the part-timers? Because I definitely feel like you.
Yes.
You need your full-timers and, and I know Jackie, you were initially talking about just the full-timers. But the full-timers, part-timers and those volunteers make a huge difference to any fire department.
This is only the full-time people that's getting the long-term disability.
Oh no, I understand that, but I'm saying collectively with the firehouse, not the long-term benefits. I mean, basically, we're, we're asking for all of that, uh, uh, all personnel that's currently there.
Uh, according to, uh, TJ DeLuca or whatever his name is, well, we've got to provide that.
There's no choice.
It's not a choice, right.
Workers' comp for everyone. Retirement and long-term disability for the eleven full-time.
Yes.
Am I clear?
After five years.
After, yeah, vesting schedule of five years. And the longer we wait, the longer the five years takes, so be, the longer it takes for the clock starts ticking for them.
Exactly.
I, I'm just trying to figure out because I don't believe that other municipalities and I, I don't know all the details. Didn't take, first of all, five years, which I never understood. Um, but I was just waiting for the opportunity to either go to one of their meetings again or have this conversation with this board. So even with the two years and how does the two years play into, um, what do you call it? A full-time fire chief.
We're going to need a full-time fire chief for several reasons.
And I agree with you, but I'm saying the two-year, the two-year factor, how does that? That's what I wanna know, I, I don't really wanna know why we need him because I know that.
I, I think it, I think it's first, Michelle. I, I think the fire chief is the first thing you do. If to build organization.
Okay.
So that, that would have to, that would be the first move, I think, and. And then you, then, then you build a group from there.
Okay, I, that's what I was hoping was the conclusion we all would come to, but I just wanted to hear that confirmed. Not for the importance of a fire, fire chief, I understand that.
And really, you know, we talked about, we really don't have to get hung up on name, if, you know, it don't necessarily have to be a named fire chief, but. It definitely needs to be a department head over the fire department. And reporting to Kelly and that department head has all responsibilities of employees and everything over there. So, um, so naturally the fire chief may be the name, but it could be anything though, but. Uh, as long as the department head that, that, uh, that, that all the employees report to over there.
But to stick with tradition, it would be a fire chief. It wouldn't be a department head of the fire department. I think we need to stick to that.
I would think so too, he wouldn't wanna go to a meeting and be the only one that's not the fire chief.
Exactly.
I'm the, I'm the department head in Rose. You don't belong here.
But I think we definitely need somebody in that level of, of leadership. From the very beginning. To, to, you know, to build organization to a town organization, yeah.
Well, I, I wouldn't recommend, the first thing you need is a, an agreement.
I was gonna say.
The agreement, the agreement is, the, the agreement needs to be completely done before you make a commitment on hiring any personnel. So that you know what you're getting. So, so, and it probably is a three-way agreement ultimately with the Wake County, but the, the real agreement is between.
Now, so if we were to pursue something like that. Is that basically saying that we are moving forward with everything that comes with it in terms of taking over the fire department?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would think that the agreement spells all that out.
Okay, just making sure.
If, if we have agreement, then we, we know that, we know what its direction is and, and all, all that. That's part of the agreement, what was you gonna say, April?
Nothing, I just basically saying.
So with this, that means Wake County comes out of this, or did you say three-way agreement, Kim? Oh, you did say three-way.
Yeah, they, they stay in it because they would still be a funder of all the unincorporated. So they're still partner, no matter what, because their share is based upon the services out into unincorporated.
Into the county, gotcha. And then just to clarify on the retirement system, is that the North Carolina, um, state retirement system that includes teachers? Is that the same system? Does anyone know?
Yeah, so actually, there's, there's three different state retirement systems, the teachers have their own, state employees have their own. And then local government employees have their own. So in this case, we're talking about the local government retirement system that we participate in.
And Amy, is that five years, that's the standard vesting schedule for local government?
That's right, that's right, all new employees who join in the retirement system, five years to vest.
Hey, that's, that's a penalty. Yeah, that's rough. Yeah, how's that work for those that have been on board for like twenty-plus years?
The day they start with Roseville, they start at day one.
No, wait, is that correct?
Yes.
My gosh.
Other municipalities, so it's the same thing.
Correct, regardless of where they go, they start from day one.
In North Carolina.
I mean, I, I kinda figured that, but I'm like, still in. Shocked because you have some guys on that fire department that have been there for a very long time. You know, they're probably thinking, I'm like one step out of retiring, oh no, one step plus five years, so.
Well, they have, they have something in place that Rodney and his group had put in place several years ago. It's, it's like a, um, uh, uh, what do you call it, Ronnie?
IRA, IRA.
Yes, yes, something like that.
Yeah, the, um. You think about it, that every, every year they stay at, at the Rose Fire Department, they lose a year of retirement. And, uh, and, and according to what they were telling us, the, the board was telling us that, uh, they were waiting for this, uh. This, uh. Uh, I guess this, this, uh, report that we were, we had contracted to do, just to see what it was. And the day the report came out, they said it was gonna be a five years before we, uh, you know, before we, we finish this thing, they. That, they said, a lot of them said that we, I can't wait five years and start retirement, so I'm, I'm gonna start looking for something else. So we really, uh. We really, you know, edmital is not gonna go away, I don't think, so we're really looking at, uh, at, at. What are we gonna do to, um, to, uh. I, I guess get on equal footings with Wake, really, really what's hurting us right now is Wake Forest and, and Nightdale. Are recruiting really heavily. Uh, I think, I think Nightdale, I think Nightdale has twelve applications out there. For, for new, new firemen, so theoretically, all of them could go to Nightdale that we have, but I don't think that would happen, but. It is really a bad time in that respect too, but.
And the, and these other municipalities will be building other. Stations too, which will require them to have more people. Which means that this problem is going to be a problem forever if we don't do something.
I'm sorry, Jackie, go ahead.
Now, now, I, I, in, uh, Roseville's, uh, Roseville, uh, bonded fire department, rural fire department's defense, they have. Acquired land to build other stations, where they, they've got land on, on three, in three different places that, that have no debt. Uh, if I remember correctly, that, that's paid for, that, that we will be, we being, uh. Roseville will be having to build fire stations in the future, so we're gonna need people, you know, to man those. Uh, but these other fire, uh, departments and other municipalities, like Wake Forest. Like Nightdale that are growing, they're gonna continue to need people too. So they're going to be hiring. And that, that's, that's the sense of urgency.
When we sat down with the consultants and, you know, we narrowed it down, I just, and maybe I missed it in the final report. I just didn't see, he knew the sense of urgency, so Kelly, where did that five? I just, and maybe I missed it in the final report, I just didn't see, he knew the sense of urgency, so Kelly, where did that five years come from?
He admitted, he he says this. That um. It's his preference to do consolidation and without a contract of multi-year transition. And what he was recommending was based upon doing work. Building up to a trend, building up to one-time consolidation. And and quite frankly, he said that he felt that both boards weren't ready yet. We're not ready yet, and that the work that he was recommending would help you get ready. In working through that on things like staffing. And other items that might take two to three years. Friday afternoon, I think he came out of that meeting a little bit differently convinced that. He felt, I think, if the uh. Board, the fire board is. Ready and you are ready. You could probably move this along sooner now. He just didn't get that sense from the uh his initial work.
Well, it's a different concession coming back from the, I mean, this isn't what they came with in the beginning. So, I mean, they came with something different. Before, they were trying to keep their board and. Keep the chief over there and have a two-headed monster, so I think it's a different concession, so I could see why Grayson would say. Well, this is a different, we're in a different place.
Sheila, I don't think that was exactly it. I just think things didn't come to light until after that. But I know you're saying leading to that report. I get what you're saying, but.
They were saying initially versus what came out of Friday's meeting. It was a to, I mean, I heard something totally different than what I heard before.
Building on what Sheila said, Sheila's saying, and and she is right, in my opinion, to a certain degree, but the fire board. Believe that Greg. Gave his opinion and recommendations without understanding. What was around us, that we were in the, that that we were surrounded by. Other municipalities that could offer benefits that would take our people away.
He knew that, Jackie.
I mean, that may be what the board believes, but Greg knows that.
Yeah, Greg knew better, Greg knew better, but Greg knew more than what you're saying.
Well, I and 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 he may have, but uh the fact remains. That we've already had five people. Look elsewhere.
I do, I do, I I agree with what Sheila said to, and and I just. The 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 process, how's that? The conversation that Greg conducted the study added clarity.
That's cute.
For for maybe everybody, for maybe everybody. And so, um and that's that's, that was a, that was a real purpose of it, right? Is go out and listen, listen and let people talk. And then see his conclusions and. Now maybe there's a different perspective. So I, that's why he has now, Michelle said, if that perspective has changed and if if the commitment is different. Than what he thought he heard. Then he said, both boards can do this. If you're committed to it. And, you know, that that next commitment level is when you get into negotiating an agreement.
I I I humbly believe that that, you know, with your expertise on writing. The uh and helping with the agreement, that the fire department board is going to be agreeable to anything. That that will move this process along quickly.
And I do think, I do think uh if if we're moving for transition, I think that um. Everybody in the group agreed that Greg does have a role still. Uh to help now that he knows us. Uh he thought of it, he he was thinking about it over the weekend, sent me a email on Sunday night. Further, just kinda. Expand on what he thought he heard and. He compares where our position is, where he is working with Gardner right now. Gardner is going through a similar thing. Of consolidation, bigger department, bigger staff, the number of staffs. But uh he felt that we we jumped. Many, many steps. Over the last two months, quite frankly. And that if we're ready, he's ready, he he would be provide, he he. And I think it'd be helpful for us, he would provide a proposal of how he would see this is up, is helping us. Through this contract. Negotiations.
Yeah, and Kelly, I I thought, I remember him saying, you can confirm this or not, but I thought I remember him saying that also our size. Which is not very big. I mean, you you just said about Garner and all, Roseville Fire Department is not as big as, you know. Garner with multiple stations and stuff. And he said our size probably would be more more likely we could do it in a short period of time. Fire department like going or whatever. I remember him talking about that, cuz, you know, really. Really from a size standpoint compared to, you know, some of these other places, even Nightdale and 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 Wake Forest. The size of our part, our department is much smaller.
He he said the first question that he's gonna ask everybody is, what's the date you want to to complete conversion to be completed by? And whether there's agreement on that, then he would work backwards.
And I think, I think one of the biggest questions we'll have to face is what we're going forth is what's the cost? How do we handle?
Cuz I will need help on that.
Yeah, how do we budget for the cost type thing? Do we even need to budget next budget cycle coming up in, you know, a few months? And we gotta get in front of it, uh cuz he talked about two years. Uh two budget years. So, uh one of our budget years is coming up soon.
He did say that it would be um possible. I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, to have them here starting as early as July. And then everything else follow.
Yeah, I have a hard time believing that. I think, I think he was saying something to that effect, April.
And also, Big Money did say that I I asked how long would it take to hire? Um the process to hire a fire chief and he says about six months. And that's gonna, we gotta have that in place. To be able to.
When we do work on the cut, the uh expenses, Kelly, you need to understand what you're getting. Because uh the Roseville Rural Fire Fire Department has managed their money well over the years. And they have quite a bit. Uh uh of money in reserve.
That's right.
That's sitting there uh to be used for different things, some of it earmarked, some of it not. I'm very impressed when they allowed me to look at their balance.
Jackie, so are you the only one that's seen it? Because we haven't seen it. I it seems like you saw it in great detail.
All you, all you gotta do is ask for it. And I I they'll give you anything you wanna see. And and Kelly, I think it that that needs to come from you, but you need to see that.
No, and I agree, cuz I was gonna bring it up too, like I know with the budget, I guess, we just had some about two years or Karani two years. And I know that some of that money that's in the account now with the fire department. I'm just assuming that that would have to be used to help offset that budget for the first two years, which would, from what I understand. What you're saying, Jackie, there is some money in there. You know, I think there's even a position that was not even filled, right?
I I want, I want Amy to look at that balance sheet. Uh and and Kelly, you scrutinize it. Uh because I'm of the opinion that uh it it it's not, that it will be able, we will be able to use that to help us especially. Two years and longer.
Who else can look at that money? Like who else has experience with the firehouse that can really do a a deeper dive into it, you know, besides?
Greg Grayson can look at it.
But didn't Amy share this? Amy, didn't you share this in the last budget cycle? We had this whole discussion.
We didn't have all the details that's really there.
The full budget, they gave a snapshot, I believe, didn't they?
Yeah, so I get the annual financial statements, which is sort of the accounting record, that thing that our auditors present to us every year. It's a little more complicated. Um in the past, we have not received their annual budget. Uh they do submit an annual budget to the county, um but prior years, we have not been part of that process. You know, I was sort of thinking about things maybe a little bit differently this process, but it sounds like maybe we may have a a even more complex one this year.
Hey Kelly, we got fifteen minutes, so um make sure you got a good understanding what from the board, what you wanna do next. And uh so we can kind of journal time.
The next meeting is for the fire department because I haven't gone to one since last year, but now that we're getting so close, I wanna attend their next one. So I guess that would be you, Jackie.
Ken.
Good, uh so um I guess I I'm asking a question. Is um. Do you want to see a proposal for Mr. Grayson? On how he can assist. Towards. Consolidation.
But I think that should be a shared cost. All about sharing.
That's fine, I just, I think that's, I think, I think that's where I would turn first. Is go to him and say, tell me how this thing, how you, how you would help and and. How would we proceed? And and then. Uh who pays for all that is, but I think I I have how I think in my mind. It may not be right. I wanna see him, his proposal. Uh particularly, I wanna see his expertise and help in this. It feels like that would be the first step for me.
I I'll agree with that. I I will will also adding a caveat that that we want an emphasis on. Getting the employees uh over to us first. To save the employees and and see how how he responds to that.
I I still wonder, Jackie, and this is only wondering. Why can it do all, what what's the difference? Why why can't it all be done at one time?
I don't care for that answer as well.
I think that's something I had to ask eventually. I don't know why, I don't know why you can't. But uh I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, because I I and I understand why you're asking that, but again. If we wait two years to bring these employees under our wings, we're gonna lose.
Oh, it's good, but it's, Jackie, it's gonna take, it's gonna take uh some months to get a contract. It's gonna take some months to get the right people in the places where they need to be. And then. Then you probably might be ready for whatever, including the employees coming over. So I I just wanna be clear. It's not, it's not July first of twenty twenty-one. I don't know when it is, but it's.
I I and I know that, Kelly, but if we had something that we could go to the employees and say. Our goal is to have you. Uh own um as town employees by January first, twenty twenty-two, or something like that, after we talk to Greg. If that's feasible, if that if that's doable. We've got employees that do not want to leave. They see light at the end of the tunnel, we might save a bunch.
Look ahead, Sheila, I I have a question for Jackie when you're done.
I was just gonna say, we still have to know the cost and the process, so I think what Kelly's proposing. As far as Grayson telling us from his expertise, what's the process and obviously the cost matters. So I think that has to be vetted out before we can make any commitment to the employees. At this point, cuz I don't wanna get their hopes up and then we're not able to realistically meet that.
And I don't want anybody telling him anything that's that's not doable.
Right.
Right, right, we we do not wanna mislead anybody. Uh Michelle, you got a question for me?
Yeah, I did. Um based on what Kelly had said, uh and what you said in regards to bringing the full-time employees on first. My my concern with that is to try to get as much as you can first, because you don't wanna lose your part-timers and your volunteers. And then you have X amount of full-timers trying to run a firehouse, even though I know they do it with neighboring communities, you know. Depending on where the call it, call it, I just think it should be worked on collectively as a group.
It 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 has to be, it has to be, Michelle.
Yeah, yeah, we we don't have that option. We gotta take them all.
Okay, deep breath, Amy. We'll call Mr. Grayson, get started and see what he can come up and cook up. We may have a report as early as March second meeting. Uh back out with uh his ideas. Um and be ready to report further if that's all right with everybody.
Cheers with me.
Sounds good.
Okay, anybody got any closing comments on the fire department? Motion to adjourn.
I hear a motion. Is there a second? Okay, is it, no one objects, I'm gonna call the motion uh or call a call meeting to adjourn. I don't hear any objections, so we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.